Good evening, welcome to the August 26, 2025 Michigan City Schools Board Trustees Meeting. We now stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now the mission statement.
We are a diverse community of families, students, and staff who take pride in our schools, contribute positively to society, and prepare students for lifelong success.
Thank you. Ms. D, all members are present except in person, except for Mr. Gresham who's online. So we have a total of six members present. Next is public forum. Sorry, give me one second, please. For public forum, please limit your comments to three minutes. There will be no indirect or direct comments with the board, and please refrain from any derogatory statements or terms referenced staff or administration. Public forum is now open. Public forum is now open. Public forum is now open. Step up, just state your name and address, please.
I'm sorry?
Just state your name and address.
Adrian Reynolds, 3223 Salem Court, Department of law. Good evening, board members. Dr. McCollum Superintendent, Assistant Associate Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Bill Hauser. I stand before you tonight with a simple but urgent request. Teachers and staff who feel valued stay, and when we stay, our students win. My name is Adrian Reynolds, and I have been proudly serving as a teacher at Little Wolves since the beginning. Throughout this time, I, along with my fellow colleagues, have not received a raise or benefits. I'm here tonight to respectfully request your support in changing that, and here's why. Commitment: The entirety of our staff give all, give our all, day in and day out, late nights, occasional voluntary time, and countless hours of ensuring every child has the chance to succeed. Growth: My colleagues and I have continued to develop our practices, bring new strategies, stronger results, and deeper relationships with our students. Stability: As a single mom, I work tirelessly to provide for myself and my son while giving my students the very best. There have been times where my son or myself have been sick or unable to come to school, and I have no other choice but to take off work and I have time to be compensated for it. Fair compensation along with benefits means that I can continue to provide for him as well as give my students my very best without compromise. As I speak for myself and on the behalf of my colleagues at Little Wolves Early Learning Center, we are not asking for reward, we're just asking for recognition for the work we've done, the growth we've shown, and the value we bring to our school. This is an urgent request because teachers like me want to keep giving our all without having to choose between our calling and making ends meet. When we feel supported and valued, our students rise with us. In conclusion today, I am not only speaking for myself, but for every educator who shows up every day to nurture, educate, and inspire our students. We love what we do, but love alone cannot pay our bills, support our families, or ensure our very own well-being. I urge you to stand with me and invest in your educators who will ultimately invest in the future of our children, and together, we can make sure that the people who give so much to their students are supported, valued, and able to continue doing this vital work that we were called to do. I would also like to mention that with me, at the bottom of my document, I have signatures from Shirley Gardner, which is another teacher at Little Wolves, Hannah Friedenberg, which is the other teacher at Little Wolves, myself being included, so three of us, and Monica Curry, which is my assistant in my classroom, and she is also joined here with me today. Furthermore, I have student, not student, parent surveys from last year that have had very good responses in the work that we do at Little Wolves. And finally, I have my class quarter one through quarter four assessment data that has shown significant improvement, and I just wanted to give that to you all, and that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public forum? Public forum is open. Public forum is now closed. Thank you. Next, we're going to consent agenda. Item number one is approval of the minutes of the meeting on July 29, 2025. Item number two is approval of employee appointments, resignations, retirements, leave of absence, and status change. Item number three is approval of secretary's report on bills to be paid. And item number four is approval of pay dates for July 25, 2025, and August 8, 2025. Item number five is travel reimbursement. Item number six is facility fee waiver, and item number seven is recommendation for employment of candidate to IC 20-26-5-11.2. It was a board's pleasure. Move for approval. I have a motion to second. Do you have any further discussion? Senior for discussion, all in favor? Oh, I forgot, we got a roll. Sorry, we got to do a roll call vote. Ms. D, please.
Ms. Allison?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Corley?
Yes.
Mr. Dubekowski?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Gresham?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes. And next, superintendent's information. Dr. McCollum.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. Tonight, we are doing something a little different, and this kicks off something we're going to be doing differently throughout the year, and that is the superintendent's announcement, me ceding my time to our buildings so that our buildings can share all the things that they have been doing, the things that they're gonna do for our students and for our community. So tonight, I'm very proud to say that NAP Elementary was the first school to jump out and say, "We want to be out there presenting what's happening here." So tonight, we have the staff at NAP, and I'd like to have Ms. Horniac, Michelle Horniac, the principal, come forward and share the good things that are happening at NAP Elementary School.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. All right, so all things NAP. When I first signed up for August, I thought, "What am I going to talk about?" It's the beginning of the year, so I thought a great way to start would be to talk about 2024-25, how we leveled up, and then how we're going to take that to the next level this year. So we had 85% of our third graders pass I read three in the spring and summer. 58% of our third graders passed math I learned. The state average was 52%, and 40% passed ELA. We tied with the state average. We incorporated a math problem-solving routine. We have an advisor that comes from math from EL education, and he worked monthly with teachers on our problem-solving routine, incorporating that into their math block. Once a week this year, we're upping it to twice a week to help improve problem-solving. And then we also added an additional 30 minutes to math blocks. So we went from 90 minutes to 120 minutes, allowing an hour of small group instruction with teachers, and then an hour of whole group. The ways that we incorporate happens of character, so we have bracelets monthly for every student. Their teacher gets a bag for them, so this month, we are doing responsibility. Our color is, thank you, our color is yellow. And so the teacher at the beginning of the month gets a bag of yellow bracelets for every student, and then when they catch that student doing that particular trait, then they hand it to them right then and there. They also pick two NAP nights that receive a certificate at the end of the month with a pencil, and we announce them on the announcements, and then every Friday, we wear that color. So for August, we're wearing yellow, and students that are wearing yellow, we take their picture, and we also have rewards. We pick prizes. So here are some kiddos with their bracelets and wearing red and yellow. Climate and Culture Committee, they created celebrations last year based on discipline referrals, absences, and tardies. The expectations were sent home at the beginning of the quarter, and the students worked to earn that reward at the end of the nine weeks. So we did a movie theater trip, a bowling trip, and then at the end, we stayed in-house, and they planned an amazing glow party. The teaching is hard work, so you have to have a little fun when you can, some different dress-up days that we did throughout the year to keep it fun. I think my favorite is the Twinkies with the Twinkie boxes hanging on there. Family involvement, we're really working to include our families. We had game night. Every grade level was invited to come with their families and play board games. Each month, there was a different grade level. Our annual trick-or-treat, grandparents' special friends' day, and then thanks to Mr. Corley for incorporating All Pro Dad, continuing with those lessons and taking that through this year as well, too. We also, we had parent requests, not last year, but the year before, to do some more award ceremonies. So every quarter, we do award ceremonies in the classroom. They can earn NAP night letter grades, most improved, and our younger grades K to 2. Everyone gets a certificate each grading period, and then the older ones, it's a little more selective. And then we have a big award ceremony at the end of the year where parents are invited to attend, and students are celebrated. We also have some ECAs, after-school activities. We have borgling club for grades K to six, art club, drama. Last year, our two student voice-selected ones, we were able to add two based on voice, and we had friendship bracelet club where every student, every grade level was invited. And then cooking club, believe it or not, we had 99 students apply to be on cooking club. We turned away kids with tears for cooking club, but it was a mixed group. We had 15, we're hoping to carry that on. We had a mixed group of 15 kiddos kindergarten to sixth grade. It was awesome to watch the elders help the littles. They made a combined cookbook, and at the end, they had baking aprons and cooking materials that they got to take home and keep. Add some more highlights, we have hashtag City Reads and Level Up. We, Dr. McCollum came over, we did, we passed out. Thanks to Petsmart, they donated enough stuffed animals, so every second and third grader took home a stuffed animal. Last year, that was their reading buddy to help promote reading at least 10 minutes at home every night. And then we also did, in the picture up there, you can see Dr. McCollum, two students, and myself, we did a Level Up t-shirt contest. So those two boys created a shirt that was, they each had their own, and they had great components, so we put them together. It's hard to see there, but they did Mario leveling up, but they did it instead of, it was a NAP night. So it was a little NAP night that leveled up to a bigger NAP night. So kids could order. They received their shirt for free, a book of their choice, and a gift card. So that was really fun. We also had for our National Honor Society induction, Mayor Angie came and served as a keynote speaker. It was great for her to relate to the community, to students. They had an opportunity to take pictures, and she gave a really great address to the kiddos. Our award, we do a big awards and promotion ceremony at the end of the year for our sixth graders and also for our fifth graders that are in our goals program. Our PTG, our parent group, works really hard. They have refreshments for them. We had a balloon arch so they can take pictures. Everyone gets a certificate, a promotion certificate, and just a really nice ceremony and awards. My, probably the best highlight, if you've been to NAP, you know that we don't have a lot of new things there. So last year, the most exciting was getting a new all-inclusive playground. It was really neat because it didn't get done over the summer like it was supposed to, but the kids got to watch it in action, and that was so cool. And they would beg the workers every day, "Can we go on it yet? Can we go on it?" So it was really fun to see it through their eyes, and when it was finished, I do wanna play. So I just have you. There we go. So this video is compliments of the communication team capturing that amazing moment. Diversity means everyone is welcome. Inclusion means everyone gets to join in and have fun. You are here to celebrate the caring and generosity that brought this idea to life.
One, two, three.
Just the best video to highlight how just amazing that day was. And then thank you to Johnny Lee Peterson. We had our first group of girls on the run this past season, a great group of girls. They were able to sign up. They worked with two of our staff members. They were provided with gym shoes, brand-new gym shoes to run in the program. They did lots of character-building lessons and the culmination race at the end. But it was nice to see the staff members bonding and the kids bonding and creating relationships with staff members that they wouldn't have had it not been for the Girls on the Run program. And now it's time to take it to the next level, plans for this school year. Kindergarten Jump Start, NAP hosted our first, so at least first ever since I've been around, kindergarten jump start, July 29 to August 1. Students participated in crew, they learned school-wide procedures, listened to stories, and practiced writing, counting, and singing. We had 15 students attend. I was even able to read a story to them and hear their concept of what a principal is, and it was hilarious that their concept is that that is someone who sits around and eats doughnuts. Oh, hi, girls. Summer planning, had us a blast. ILT, BLT, and our climate and culture committees met in the summer to plan and prep for the school year. My instructional coach, Ashlyn Palmer, and myself spent a day and a half prepping to take our students to the next level this year. We identified students for acceleration clubs that started today, our quickest launch yet, I think, to enhance students' reading and math skills. And speaking of Ashlyn, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize Ashlyn for all her hard work and dedication to the NAP students and staff. She joined the NAP crew last year. She took the leap going from being a classroom teacher to coach seamlessly. She always takes initiative and just knows what I need before I even know that I need it. After her first grade-level team meeting in August, one of a seasoned veteran teachers said that was the best grade-level team meeting that she'd ever been at. She's just always willing to step in. I was at the first day of summer school, and it was so heartwarming to see the kids from NAP run up and give her a hug. She just made relationships with kiddos that she doesn't even, you know, work with. That bond is different when you have a classroom of kids, and it was just awesome to see. So I'm so proud of her. I'm so appreciative of her, and I can't wait to watch her help us take NAP to the next level this year.
You should just come watch this. Yes, thank you.
And then Mr. Gresham is not here, but I put, "NAP honorary crew member." He graciously volunteered to help NAP on the first day of school. I was able to give him a tour of our multisensory room and our four goals classrooms, and he helped our littles and our goals students get to the appropriate classroom. So thank you, thank you, thank you for coming and helped take our first day to the next level. Our 26, nope, I'm sorry, I should say 25, 26 goals. We're shooting for 90% or higher on I read three, increasing our parental involvement, at least a 5% increase on last year's I learned scores for all learners, and to incorporate the Wolfy Way. And stay tuned for how we incorporate the Wolfy Way this year and if we meet our goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board member have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to hear about NAP. When I was on patrol, and the community probably doesn't know this, but MCPD, each dayship officer has a school that they're, that they have been adopted. So NAP was my school when I was on patrol, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Anything else, Dr. McCollum?
I want to thank Ms. Horniac again and the staff at NAP for being trailblazers for us. And once again, I love the incorporation of going to the next level, so I can't wait to see how this all comes to fruition this year. So good luck to you all, and once again, look forward to seeing how things go for NAP this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're into the business section of the agenda. First piece of business is the first public hearing on projects and preliminary determination. Mr. Robert Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Tonight is the preliminary determination public hearing for a couple bond issues. The first one gives us the opportunity to make our solar panel payments from the bond issue, relieving our operations fund of that payment. And that'll free up quite a bit of money. The second provides additional funding for equipment, safety, and technology. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jason Tansel from Baker Tilly to give his presentation on these two issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, and good evening, Dr. McCollum, Ms. Bill Hauser, Phil Hauser, and members of the board. My name is Jason Tansel of Baker Tilly, and we represent the school corporation as its municipal advisor. As Mr. Harris mentioned, we are here for the first preliminary determination hearing of two separate bond issues. Both bond issues will be payable from the school corporation's debt service fund. As Mr. Harris mentioned, the first bond issue is to move the installment payment contract that is currently paid from the operations fund for our solar panels to the debt service fund. This loan was issued back in October of 2017 at an interest rate of 2.62%. And those things will not change. We are just simply moving this loan to a general obligation bond payable from the debt service fund. The second bond issue will be for facility-wide improvements, as Mr. Harris mentioned, and that will be in an amount not to exceed $1.5 million. So the presentation here before you summarizes how the school corporation would potentially be able to do this while also not increasing its debt service tax rate. So with that, we will review the bonds that are currently payable from the school corporation's debt service fund because this plays a major factor. Currently, there are seven bonds payable through the school corporation's debt service fund with annual payments of approximately $14 million. And I just want to point out that all bonds are repaid within the next four years by January 15, 2029, or budget year 2028. Because these bonds are coming to maturity, this would allow the school corporation to move the solar loan from the operations to the debt service while also issuing the $1.5 million for improvements throughout the district while not increasing the tax rate. The bonds being discussed tonight are general obligation bonds, and there is a limitation as to how much we can issue. This limitation is 2% of one-third of the most recent net assessed value. And actually, just last week, 2026 net assessed value was released. It's just over $3.7 billion, so it is projected to grow from 2025 to 2026. This limitation, again, you can see, we also must factor in the three general obligation bonds that are currently outstanding. Again, that's the 2021, 2022, and 2024 general obligation bonds. You can see this leaves roughly $14.4 million available for general obligation bonds with 2025 AV, or if we use 2026 assessed value, that would be $15.1 million. So the bonds being discussed tonight would fit within this parameter. Our fourth slide is a summary of the key financial information of these two proposed bond issuances. The information that you see on this slide, it's important to keep in mind, is we are establishing maximums. These are maximums we cannot exceed, but we can come down from. For example, on the 2025 A general obligation bonds, the $6,694 that is left on that loan from 2017, that is a maximum that is not to exceed. The repayment term will be 12 years because that was the original repayment term from the 2017 loan, and there is currently $1,014,000 left on that interest cost. I do want to point out that the interest rate received on this loan back in 2017 was 2.62%, which is better than what we would anticipate the rate being today. And so that is working in the school corporation's favor. The second column is the amount for the district-wide facility improvement updates. Again, this borrowing amount is not to exceed $1.5 million. After bond cost of issuance, we would anticipate $1.3 million being available for the improvements. Currently, assuming a two-year repayment term, but the maximums that you would see within your resolutions would be three to provide flexibility if something unforeseen happened before our bond sale. Currently, estimated interest expense is approximately $120,000, and the maximum annual debt service payment that we cannot exceed is $1,564,000. You will see here that the tax rate associated with these payments are 1.53 and 4.14, respectively, but because the school corporation will be able to replace payments while they come to maturity, we don't anticipate a tax rate increase to the school corporation's debt service fund. Also provided are debt ratios required by Indiana statute in relation to the total direct and overlapping debt of Michigan City Schools with its overlapping taxing units. And finally, you'll see here on this slide, the proposed repayment term for the solar loan of $6,600,000, as well as the $1.5 million general obligation bond for the improvements throughout the district. Again, you will see, we are not changing the repayment term for the solar loan. That is outlined in blue, but those annual payments are $577,000 annually. We will be moving that starting next pay year in 2026 to the debt service fund, and that final maturity will still be in 2037. The gold bars represent the proposed repayment term of the $1.5 million. Again, as we mentioned, this is a two-year repayment term, flexibility for three-year, but we are going to be proposing the two-year when we arrive at the bond sale. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions the board would have about these two separate projects and two separate bond issuances.
Any questions from the board? Because this is a public hearing, we have to do public comment. Mr. Kaminski? Okay. No questions from the board? Mr. Gresham, do you have any questions?
No questions. I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, public forum is now open again, reference the presentation I've just given by Mr. Harris. I'm sorry, we just received. Any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Public comment is now closed. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next order of business is the bonding issuance. Mr. Harris, again. Mr. Harris, again. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm bad. I'm like a robot up here. Number three idol. memorandum of understanding between Family Advocates Incorporated and Michigan City Area Schools. Ms. Davis.
Good evening, thank you for having me this evening. I am seeking approval for a memorandum of understanding between Michigan City Area Schools and Family Advocates. Family Advocates is an umbrella agency that has been serving in the Port County for over 35 years. And with this agreement, we would start a mentoring program at the elementary level where mentors would be assigned to identified students at several of the elementary schools to provide one-to-one mentoring every week. In addition to the mentoring program, we would look at doing small groups at the middle school levels, once again with identified students. Jackie Dermody, the executive director from Family Advocates and her team are here this evening. This is possible through a grant that Jackie and her team secured through the Health Foundation of LaPorte County. So there is no cost to us as a school district. And they're here if there's any additional questions as well.
Any questions from the board? It's a quick question, School Buddies, is that the mentoring program?
This is a second one, so School Buddies is that three of them. But the goal is to try to get a mentoring program at all eight of our elementary schools. So this will put us at five, starting now.
Thank you.
When does the mentoring take place?
We're having a meeting for that next week regarding, oh, the mentoring. Sorry, I was thinking small group. They have just, they're hiring staff now as far as then to start to work with the elementary schools. If it were approved, to identify students for them to move forward with hiring and training their mentors. They do the hiring and training of all the mentors then to come in and coordinate with our buildings.
Okay, and this is during the school day?
This is during the school day.
Okay.
So we would provide the space for when the mentors come in. They would work with the mentors, would work with the building principal as far as when the best time of day to come in is, to then pull the students out for about 30-minute mentoring sessions.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by any other members? Is aggression good? You're awfully quiet on Zoom.
Yeah, it's a little different when you're on public wifi. All good here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Davis. What is the pleasure of the, what is the pleasure of the board?
Me too, first.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor? I'm sorry. It's me, Ms. D, roll call vote, please. Yes.
Mr. Gresham?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes. Ms. Kaminsky, do we need to go back to the bond issuance and vote on that?
No.
No, no, good, okay. Hurry, okay. All right, okay. Next, item of business, Neola, second update, Mr. Kaminsky.
We have the July 2025 update in front of you. I did not receive any questions regarding this, we would ask for approval.
Any questions from the board members? No? Seeing no questions, what's the pleasure of the board?
Have a motion in a second. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor? Any oppose?
I'm sorry, roll call vote, man. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, that passes. I'm gonna get it this time. Number five, appointment to Trail Creek Park Board. Well, we have a request from the Trail Creek Board to appoint Mr. Jeffrey Ullman. I ask for a motion to appoint Mr. Ullman to the Trail Creek Park Board. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote, please. I got it this time. Thank you, that passes. Final piece of business is FACS, Ms. Bealhouser.
Thank you, good evening. Tonight, I'm requesting the board's approval for the FACS contract. It's an annual contract that we use to, with a third-party vendor, FACS, to support the equitable share portion for non-public schools. And so all the funds come from their portion of the Title I grant.
Thank you. Any questions from any board members? No? Seeing no questions, roll call vote, please. I'm sorry, what's the board's pleasure? Have a motion in a second. Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, that passes. So at this time, come to board statements or issues requiring action prior to the next board meeting. Any statements or by any board members? Mr. Gresham?
I would just like to, to go out and thank everyone in our transportation department for an amazing week last week, as well as all of the area school systems that really helped us out a lot. You know, we, we compete in a lot of measures, we compete in a lot of ways, but overall, our mission is education and to see so many of our peer districts step up the way they did, as well as our own employees, to go far above and beyond the call of duty to get us back on the road was amazing. Thank you all so much. And that's all I have, I'll save the rest for September.
Thank you, any other board members? No? All right, so as usual, Dr. McCollum, again, thank you and your cabinet for guiding the school district. We, what, we're about a week in the school and they tried to start us off a little bumpy, but we made it through. Hopefully, that is the most difficult thing we have to take care of this school year, but if not, again, we have a lot of trust in you and thank you for what you have been doing for us here these several last couple of years and not even more as superintendent. To our staff, and again, echoing what Mr. Gresham said, especially transportation right now, just getting those buses back in order so that our kids, you know, can get back to school. Bump in the road, but again, I think, you know, saying with what we have, our infrastructure, what we have already prepared, that something like that didn't stop us from, you know, moving forward. To rest of staff and to our parents and to our students, again, thank you all. We started school, I'm always glad when school starts because my full-time job becomes just a little bit easier after the summer, it's like the end of summer and everybody's back to school and, you know, the weather has changed a little bit for us too, so. But it's always good to see kids back at school, you know, sporting events, just all the things going on as you heard from the principal from NAP. And we'll hear more about what's going on in our schools. Big shout out to Elkhart Community Schools, LaPorte Community Schools, Maryville Community Schools, New Prairie Community Schools, South Central Community School Corporation and Warsaw Community Schools for helping us in a time of need. You often can, can actually judge and actually measure a community's success by not just what they have, but what they're able to receive. And the support that we get from the communities surrounding us and just throughout the state of Indiana in our time of need was just impressive. And that, you know, was one of those things that, you know, you wake up, you know, you hear about this, but you know that because of, you know, what we have here in this community, but also what we, the relationships and the connection we have, that this small bump in the road was not going to stop us from, you know, moving forward. And, you know, saying like I said, we had a rough start, but we got through it. And again, a big shout out to those school districts and to everybody that came forward and willing to, you know, help us in our time of need. It's often said, when communities support each other, the outcomes are powerful, trust is strengthened, opportunities are created and challenges overcome are overcome together. By working hand in hand, we build safer neighborhoods, inspire our youth and create a foundation of resilience that carries us all forward. Those words, I hope that, you know, as a community, we can continue to take those words in and echo them out as we continue to go through the school year. As you guys are here, the state is not helping us out, none. I don't think they've ever really helped us out as much, but again, it hasn't stopped us from moving forward. And we have a great school district and that's because we have a great community. So thank you all for just supporting our kids and just make sure we support each other also. So thank you, that'll be the end of our meeting unless Dr. McCollum have anything?
Both you, Mr. Corley and Mr. Gresham, said a lot that for sure, over the weekend, for last week, thought a lot about in terms of the situation that we're in in terms of public schools. In public schools, it's no secret, not just in our state, but around the country, are pitted against one another. And we see that all the time in terms of, we have to have students enroll. Many of the districts that stepped up and helped us last week are districts that send their buses into our district to get students. But when the situation happened last week, to have districts reach out to us, Warsaw, to have our attorney, Mr. Kaminsky, who I think very much, be able to reach out to the other districts in our county, and they stepped right up and no hesitation. And then the same thing with Elkhart and Maryville. Phone call, they wanted to know how many buses you need. So it showed the power of public schools and how we support one another and the mission truly is to support students. So that definitely filled my heart with joy to see us normally competing with one another, but in this point, supporting one another. And then for the community. If you've been in Michigan City long enough, you know that we are for sure our worst critic. And in a time where we did have critics, people who were criticizing us for something that we didn't control, but to see the overwhelming support within our community, how our community galvanized behind the schools, behind our transportation department, behind our students, to me, that is what we need more of. And I was happy to see that take place this week. Push all the noise aside, support one another. And as you said, Mr. Corley, several times in our meetings, you know, we are a community. We don't always get along, but when it comes to doing the right thing, supporting our students is the right thing. It was heartwarming to see everybody supporting our students. So once again, thank everybody who participated and supported us. And it was great to see also Friday night, as I told our principal and athletic director, to win that game Friday night, to set the tone for the rest of the school year. So once again, thank you, everybody that supported us in making sure our students receive what they do in person.
Thank you. Thank you, seeing no more statements or anything before the next meeting. Thank you all for attending and we will see you all back here next month. Thank you.